The City Council appreciates your attendance. Citizens Interest provides the -- Citizen Interest provides the Council with valuable information regarding issues of the community. Regular meetings are held the second Wednesday of every month at 6:00 and typically the last Friday of every month at 8:30. In compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, any person with a disability who requires a modification or an accommodation in order to participate in a meeting should contact the City Clerk’s office prior to the meeting. Pursuant to Executive Order N2920, members of the City Council may teleconference into this meeting without noticing each teleconference location from which a member will be participating in a public meeting. We also have coronavirus disease advisory. As precaution for both staff, our constituents, and elected officials, the city is asking members of the public to follow the California Department of Health guidance on mass gatherings when deciding whether to attend this meeting. All sitting in the council meeting will be spaced at least six feet apart without minimizing close contact as recommended by state guidelines. Although public access to the meeting in person will be allowed, if you are sick or identify yourself as being higher risk based on the CDC’s guidelines, you may wish to watch or listen to the meeting from home or provide input electronically. Members of the public may observe and offer comments at this meeting electronically or otherwise. First, public comment will be accepted by email to thecityofSanMarino.org before or during the meeting and prior to the proposed public comment on any item, and they will be read by the City Clerk, who is not here tonight, so that responsibility will be handled by our Manager of Community Resources. Right, Director?
I’m here.
Manager. A lengthy public comment may be summarized in the interest of time. Secondly, public comment will be accepted electronically via Zoom U.S. Teleconference Module, and that’s the computer for video streaming, and you see we’ve implemented a screen next to us to keep everybody informed. If you are individual with a disability and need a reasonable modification, please contact, again, the City Clerk or phone prior to the meeting for assistance. There are three ways to participate in this meeting: via computer, via video streaming. You can find the website address and the meeting ID online in our City Council Agenda. You can also attend by phone for audio only. The phone number for that is (669) 900-9128, and there’s a meeting ID as well. And you can also submit public comments via email, as I outlined before. So I’d like everybody to join us, and the flag can please go up. Right hand over your heart, ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Jacobowski?
Here.
Councilmember Taught?
Here.
Vice Mayor Udi?
Here.
And Mayor Shepard Rami?
Here.
The special meeting agenda is posted 24 hours each meeting at defined locations: City Hall, the Crowell Public Library, and the Recreation Department, as well as posted online at the city’s website. Public comments: The city welcomes public comments, and members of the public may address the City Council by completing a comment card or following other procedures if they are teleconferencing or attending by audio. At this time, the public may address the City Council on items that are not on the agenda. Do we have any comments?
No, it’s done.
Thank you very much. Next, we’re going to administrative business, and our first item under that is the City Managers’ Report.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. As you indicated, our City Clerk is unfortunately not with us this evening, so we are all banding together as teamwork requires and taking on her roles. You’ll notice that it takes several of us to fill the role of one of her, which is an indication of how valuable she is, so we definitely are missing her tonight. As you indicated, Mayor -- Community Resources Manager Scott Pilch will be manning the Zoom operations. Community Engagement Manager Fowler is looking remotely and also managing the City Clerk email address in case we get any comments, and I will be having the honor of doing all of your roll call votes this evening. I wanted to update you tonight on some of the efforts that all of the departments are taking with regard to the COVID-19 response. And in addition to the list that I put together when I solicited some of the information from departments, I am pleased to tell you that I was overwhelmed with information. I don’t want to take all the time tonight to go through everything that I received, but for the council’s sake and, of course, our community that might be watching, all of our departments are engaged in a number of different programs and efforts to be serving the community during this time. The one that I will just choose to talk about tonight is communication efforts, because this is how you and members of the public can find out all of the things that we don’t have time for me to talk about tonight. We do have a webpage devoted on the city’s website, so if residents want to go to the city’s webpage, we do have a coronavirus-dedicated page that lists out all of the messages, all of the information that we have, that includes links to other governmental agencies and actions that they have taken. We are engaged in constant discussion about ways to communicate out more to the community, and you’ll be seeing some of those in the next couple of days. Our regular report out to the community will be going tomorrow, combined with our weekly briefing that normally goes out. We have a COVID area that we’re reporting on some of that information. There are ways to sign up to get those emails. If you go to our website, you can sign up to get that week the email. And even for the community members that don’t receive it, that information is then posted on the website, so it can be viewed even if you don’t get that email. So I encourage everybody to keep visiting our website to see what efforts are afoot, and rest assured that your city’s staff is hard at work making sure that the city continues to roll forward and that our community continues to be protected. On that note, Mayor, I believe you had something that you wanted to announce as well.
Thank you very much, Dr. Marlowe. Dr. Marlowe, I’ll get titles right. In anticipation of an increased influx to the county parks on Easter Sunday and believing that that would make it impossible for people to practice correct social distancing and remain safe, yesterday, the L.A. County ordered that parks would be closed for Easter Sunday. And following that order, and as we also have the potential for increased numbers as well as spillover and crowding because of the county’s park closures, Lacy Park will also be closed for Easter Sunday. It will be open Saturday and then reopen again on Monday, as normal as we’ve been proceeding for playtime, which will remain closed, and rules about social distancing when you are at the park, as well as a prohibition against any gathering of any size will still continue. The city’s top priority remains the health, safety, and well-being of residents and staff, and so we appreciate everybody’s support and understanding as we collectively work to protect our community. Lacy Park is a haven and provides a great public service to many, and it’s for their mental as well as physical well-being, and especially during this particularly challenging time. So we will keep the park open for now and continue to assess Lacy Park’s daily operations and implement precautionary measures if and when they are necessary, like it is for this Sunday. So now, I’m hoping is not the time to change anyone’s behavior or become complacent. Each and every day, the number, as you well know, in Los Angeles County goes up in number of cases and the deaths, and so everybody is even at a greater risk from this horrible coronavirus. So I hope we can all double our efforts, be extra vigilant now, and continue to stay safer at home. And I think that many of you have probably heard online and otherwise that medical professionals are now recommending home deliveries, at least for the next week. Try to avoid going to stores and stay safer at home, and really keep you and your loved ones safe. And together, we are San Marino, and I know we will get to better times ahead, so thank Next, we have further readings. The City Action permits the City Council to act on ordinances and resolutions without having to read the full text of the ordinance or resolution. The title of the ordinance will be read on first reading, and an ordinance on second reading does not require having that same title read. However, the City Council may request that an ordinance or resolution be read in its entirety before taking any action. So do I have a motion and a second to waive further readings?
So moved. Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Selecting Mr. Bigg, hold on.
Hold on.
There you go.
Yes?
Wonderful. Councilmember Taught?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Udi?
Yes.
And Mayor Shepard Rami?
Yes, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Before we move to the consent calendar, we would like to announce that we are pulling one of the agenda items later because of action previously taken, so I’d like to turn it over to our City Attorney, Miss Stephanie Cattie.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Marlowe. Just wanted to report that the City Council met at 5:00 p.m. for its special meeting, which included three items on closed session. As stated during the closed session report for that special meeting, for Items 2, Cases 1 and 2, the City Council unanimously approved two workers’ compensation settlement agreements. For closed session, Item Number 1 for that 5:00 p.m. meeting, the City Council unanimously approved the joining of the litigation consortium against Southern California Edison for under collection of utility user taxes and to authorize a City Manager to enter into that agreement. Because the Council already took action, no further action is needed for Agenda Item Number 12 for tonight, and therefore, we can take it off the agenda for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much, City Attorney. And not to put you back on the spot again, but begin before you consider the consent agenda as well. I believe the City Attorneys want to make one adjustment to Item Number 6, which is adoption of Resolution R20-10, denying without prejudice conditional use permit Number 19-8 and design review case numbers DRC19-16HP and DRC19-76, 2404 Mission Street, and directing the waiver of additional application fees for one year. So again, Ms. Fowler?
Thank you, Dr. Marlowe. We just wanted to make a minor clarification for the record of Item Number 6 regarding the 2404 Mission Street project. The first sentence of the staff report currently says that on February 12, 2020, the City Council conducted the de novo hearing, but what it should actually say is that on February 12, 2020, the City Council voted to instruct the City Clerk to set a de novo public hearing. The de novo hearing was conducted on March 11, 2020. This is consistent and reflected in the resolution set for adoption tonight. Moreover, after the public hearing on this item was closed, the city received a letter from Sonia Tross of “Yes, in my backyard” regarding the applicability of the Housing Accountability Act to this project. Though this is not the time to be putting things into the record, I would like to note that this contention was already considered by the Council on March 11 and reflected in Section 2 of the proposed resolution tonight.
Thank you very much, City Attorney and Madam Mayor. Please feel free to proceed. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you, Stephanie, for your reports on the closed session as well as the clarification for Item Number 6. I appreciate that. Next, we have the consent, the rest of the consent items. Do any council members wish to pull any items off the consent agenda?
No.
Councilmember Wong?
No.
Councilmember Taught?
No.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
No, thank you.
Vice Mayor Udi?
No.
And I do not either. So may I have a motion and a second to approve the entire agenda, Consent Calendar, excuse me, Items 1 through 10?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Taught?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Udi?
Yes.
And Mayor Shepard Rami?
Yes.
And Mayor Shepard Rami, I’ve had a request that you speak a little closer into the microphone.
Thank you. All right, next, we will go to the first item of new business, Agenda Item 11, which is the acceptance of donation from the San Marino Public Library Foundation for the Crowell Public Library Public Access Computers Upgrade Project. And I believe we have a staff report? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and members of the community. I’m happy to report that the Library Foundation would like to present a $36,000 donation to the city of San Marino. Due to the current emergency, the members of the Library Foundation could not attend the meeting to present the check, but was gracious enough to slide the check under the doors of the hall. I had that with me here, and they were also able to produce or submit a picture, and they had the check that they were holding. So I have the check here with me. The Library Foundation is pleased that the donation will be used by the city to replace the public access computers at the Crowell Public Library. The funds for this donation comes from the Delicious Destination Event, which was held at the Crowell Public Library on November 16, 2019. Staff recommends that the City Council accept the donation from the foundation and amend the donation’s fund budget to reflect a donation and expenditure. If the City Council concurs with staff’s recommendation, the appropriate motion would be, “I move to accept the designation donation of $36,000 from the foundation and approve the replacement of public access computers at the Crowell Library. Amend the fiscal year 2019-20 revenue budget to recognize revenue of $36,000 in the donations fund at account 281-90-3601-0000, library donations received, and approve a fiscal year 2019-20 expenditure budget amendment by appropriation of $36,000 to the donations fund account 281-90-4613-0000, Equipment Library.” That concludes my presentation. Staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Councilmember Taught?
I have no questions.
Councilmember Wong?
No question.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
No questions.
Vice Mayor Udi?
No questions, thank you.
And I don’t have any questions, thank you very much. Are there -- I would like to open this up for public discussion. I don’t know if anybody here would like to make a comment on this, or if we have anybody online electronically?
No one online.
Thank you. And do we have any emailed public comments?
None.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I’ll bring the matter back to council for discussion. Do I have any comments or questions, or comments from council?
No, I would like to make the motion.
All right. Why just want -- can I say? I can make a comment before you do.
Yes.
Yes, I’m sorry.
I wanted to -- okay, and also, I will go to you, Susan, in just a sec. I wanted to thank very much the Library Foundation. There are several community groups that support our library, as well as the staff and dedicated volunteers there, and I think the city is very blessed to have such a significant amount of public support for the library, and I know that the Public Library Foundation works very hard and had an excellent event that led to this significant donation, which will help us all in our budget, and it will provide a benefit for the long term for the cities and the residents, as well as the public that uses the library. So I really want to acknowledge their outstanding efforts and make sure that they know that even if they’re not here tonight, we are very grateful and look forward to working with them in the future. And congratulations to them on a very successful event and this significant donation. So thank you. And Councilmember Jacobowski, would you like to comment?
I was, of course, going to say the same, but I want to underscore the significant amount of work this took and such a creative, lovely evening. So thank you so much to the foundation.
So I also want to add that as it is, I agree with what you said, and the Delicious Destination Event that they had this year was one of the best ever, and I should want to reiterate that, but to their effort.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor Udi, did you have any comments to add?
No, appreciate your support, obviously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, and now, Councilmember Taught, can you renew your motion?
Yes, I will start it and renew it. And as I understand it, there will be actual formal items sometime later where we could do that.
We’re going to put them on the agenda once we’re through this. We’re supposed to have a moment to recognize the leadership of the foundation.
Excellent.
Give to the city.
I move to, one, accept the very gracious designation donation of $36,000 from the foundation and approve the replacement of public access computers at the Crowell Library. Number two, amend the fiscal year 2019-20 revenue budget to recognize revenue of $36,000 in the donations fund at account 281-90-3601-0000, library donations received. And, number three, approve a fiscal year 2019-20 expenditure budget amendment by appropriation of $36,000 to the donation fund account 281-90-4613-0000, Equipment Library.
Thank you. And do I have a second?
Second.
Can you do the roll call, please?
Yes, absolutely. Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Taught?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Udi?
Yes.
And Mayor Shepard Rami?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion passes.
Thank you very much. I believe we’re going to Item --
Item 12, we removed, and you can move to Item 13.
Thanks. So we’re going on to Item 13, Adoption of Resolution R20-12, Renewing the Conclamation of a Local Emergency and Urgency Ordinance Number 20-013163-U, Standing Certain Planning and Building Entitlements and Declaring the Urgency Thereof in Response to COVID-19. This is -- can we have a staff presentation, please?
Thank you, Madam Council. On March 17, 2020, the City Council adopted the current emergency declaration. Subsequent to the city’s emergency declaration, Governor Newsom issued Executive Order N33-20, which ordered the Safe at Home mandate. Due to this ongoing crisis, it is a requirement of the city to adopt further extensions of this declaration. Pursuant to City Code Section 040302 of the San Marino City Code, a proclamation of a local emergency must be renewed every 30 days. With the adoption of the attached Resolution R20-12, the proclamation of the emergency declaration will be extended. The second part of this report includes an urgency ordinance that provides my position the authority to grant a 90-day extension to existing approved entitlements like design review actions as well as conditional use permit actions and variance actions. Only projects that have been approved per the land use requirements of Chapter 23 may qualify. In addition to these projects, projects that are also permitted will also be granted a 90-day extension pursuant to the ordinance. The adoption of the urgency ordinance will go into effect April 9, and shall benefit approximately 52 projects. These 52 projects represent the projects approved by the planning commission and design review within the last year. Only about half of these projects, though, will need the extensions, as the other half have already submitted plans for review with the building division. And also, with that said, actually, I wanted to add, as an example of an extension to this ordinance, at least a benefited project, the Gradinide project will benefit entirely from this 90-day extension, as their current temporary use permit is set to expire or sunset at the end of May. And so with this adoption of the urgency ordinance, it provides the Gradinide event coordinators up until the end of August under this temporary use permit. I wanted to provide the council and the public with an example of the benefit to this ordinance. So with that said, staff recommends to the City Council adoption of Resolution R20-12, a resolution to the City Council of the City of San Marino renewing the proclamation of the existence of a local emergency concerning the COVID-19 virus, and, read by title only, waive further readings and adopt ordinance Number 20-1363-U, an urgency ordinance of the City of San Marino, extending certain planning and building entitlements for 90 days, and declare the urgency thereof. I’m open for questions.
Thank you very much. Should we have any questions? Councilmember Jacobowski, would you start us off?
No, I have no questions. I appreciate Director Cervantes’ thinking ahead of the building issues.
Thank you. City Councilmember Wong?
No questions.
Councilmember Taught?
Yeah, I just want to get the timeframe set up. So if you have a permit of some sort that ends tomorrow, you get 90 days from the date it ended, and not 90 days from the date the local emergency ends.
No, it’s 90 days from when it expired.
Expired, okay. That’s my other question. I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Udi?
No questions, thank you for thinking ahead.
And I don’t have any questions. Thank you as well, Director Cervantes, and I appreciate coming, knowing the number as well. It’s a significant number, but I -- although, numbers, so, will be affected really by this, including some of the most important or most community-evolved, such as Gradinide. So I appreciate your work in this regard and thinking ahead. Do we have any public comments on this item at this time?
None at this time.
All right. Do we have any other comments by City Council for discussion? Councilmember Jacobowski?
None, thank you.
Councilmember Wong?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Taught?
No further comment.
Vice Mayor Udi?
No comments, thank you.
And I don’t. Thank you very much. Do I have a motion?
I move to, number one, adopt Resolution Number R20-12, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Marino, renewing the proclamation of the existence of a local emergency concerning the COVID-19 virus, and, number two, read by title only, waive further reading and adopt ordinance Number 20-0-1363-U, an urgency ordinance of the City of San Marino, extending certain planning and building entitlements for 90 days and declaring the urgency thereof.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Taught?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Udi?
Yes.
And Mayor Shepard Rami?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Now moving on to item, Agenda Item 14, Adoption of Urgency Ordinance Number 20-0-1362-U, adopting emergency regulations related to residential and commercial tenant evictions and declaring the urgency thereof in consideration of action to reduce the impact on residents and local businesses related to the COVID-19 virus. Director Cervantes, will you give the report as well?
Yes, thank you, Madam Council. As a result of the public health emergency and the precautions recommended by the health authority, many tenants in the city have experienced or expect soon to experience sudden and unexpected income loss, which will affect their ability to pay their rent. On March 16, 2020, Governor Newsom issued Executive Order N28-20, which authorizes local governments to impose limitations on evictions. As most cities in the region have already adopted similar eviction ordinances, they have only adopted those ordinance in mind, or keeping in mind of those residential properties. The ordinance presented to council not only includes a protection on evictions for residential tenants, but also includes commercial tenants as well. Page 14-3 of the Agenda of the staff report provides the criteria that protects tenants from being evicted during this crisis. On the same page are the definitions of what is considered a financial impact. Any violation of this mandate shall be considered a misdemeanor or infraction and subject to criminal prosecutions on Section 2 of the ordinance. The second component of this report is with respect to fees and penalties waivers. Staff is seeking direction from the City Council to suspend late fees and penalties for administrative citations related to business license fees and building permit renewals. A late fee for a business license will run up about $50, while a late fee for not renewing building permit on time is 50% the cost of the building permit, which could be, which is high dependent on the scope of the project. And so the ordinance, if adopted, will run until the emergency is expired, and so if, of course, if the emergency is extended pursuant to public health officials and the state, we can certainly look at this ordinance to extend it when it does come up again. So with that said, staff recommends the City Council, first of all, find that proposed action is exempt from the CEQA, which is California Environment Policy Act, pursuant to the Guidelines 15061. Two, adopt urgency ordinance Number 20-1362-U, and lastly, direct staff to suspend the collection of late fees and penalties as set forth in the staff report. And then I open for questions.
Thank you very much, Director Cervantes. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Taught?
Yes, we discussed earlier about putting a statement in there that served that in the governor’s order that says to the extent that this does not preclude people, this does not cover people who are fully capable of paying their rent and should not be used as an excuse, and I forget the actual language that I provided you. Do you have a suggested amendment?
I do, and I -- I do, and I actually concluded way too early without giving our city attorney the ability to read by title or read for the record the changes. And so I want to give our city attorney the opportunity to read the language for the record, which will be then put into the ordinance.
Yes, thank you. This will go page three of the ordinance, Section 1A1, which is nothing in this ordinance shall prevent the residential tenant who is able to pay all or some of the rent due from paying that rent in a timely manner. And then it goes, then it will continue with the language we had, or relieve the residential tenant of liability for the unpaid rent, which the landlord may seek after expiration of the local emergency, and which the tenant must pay within six months of the expiration of the local emergency. Likewise, that same language has been added to Section 2A. Again, nothing in this ordinance shall prevent a commercial tenant who is able to pay all or some of the rent due from paying that rent in a timely manner, or relieve the commercial tenant of liability for the unpaid rent, which the landlord may seek after expiration of the local emergency, and which the commercial tenant must pay within six months of the expiration of the local emergency. So that language has been added to both provisions of the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. My other question deals with the part concerning late fees and the fine. That only applies, does it not, to the imposition of fines that existed prior to our declaration of emergency?
Correct.
So someone who maybe had a fine imposed two weeks before, that extension did not apply to them. They're still required to pay. Isn't that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I have no further questions.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Tal? Councilmember Wong?
No question.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have one question. I certainly hope this would not be the situation, but if the emergency would continue beyond what we would call a reasonable amount of time, would we then come back and revisit this ordinance and perhaps see if it is necessary to amend any parts of it?
We certainly could do that. Likewise, the governor may be deciding to make some additional changes to his emergency order depending upon what happens in the future.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I have no further questions.
Okay. Director Cervantes, do you have anything to add to that?
No, that's okay.
Okay. Councilmember Tal had another question, please.
I'll go to it, and I'll come back to it. I just want to double check and make sure.
Okay. So Vice Mayor Yudi, did you have any questions?
Yeah, just one. What's the sunset clause on this? Is it dates to certain or does it take the governor removing the stated emergency?
This one is tied to the city's emergency, so it would be whenever the City Council determines to not to renew the declaration of emergency, which took in the last agenda item.
Okay. Thank you. No other question?
And I don't have any questions. If Councilmember Tal had one more thing?
And this just popped in my head, but how was this information? I know that these informations are not going to be part of our regular ordinances. How is this information going to be pushed out to landlords?
Likely what we do is utilize the email addresses that we have for each property owner as well as mail. We'll send out, we can certainly send out certified mail, although that, we haven't looked at the cost for doing something like that. Posted on the website would be one option that we have, as we do for most ordinances that are approved. Those initially are likely the ways of getting out this information.
Thank you.
And just to follow up on that, so is there a way to send some sort of postcard-type notice to everybody, excuse me, all of the commercial landlords in town and then refer them to the website or actually the text on the website with a specific address and maybe even newspapers? I'm not sure what is considered legal notice, so that's a part for Director Cervantes as well as?
Obviously, paying the cost for doing something like that, we could dive into that option to see if we can make that work.
And City Attorney, I just don't know if you have a comment as well as to what is appropriate to do in the present circumstances on this type of thing? Because we do want to make our landlords aware that we're putting this action in and they might not normally follow the agenda items that City Council members take.
I think certainly written notice as well as having it posted on the website. I hope both of those things, but I think probably the written notice to the businesses would be instructive.
All right.
And to the residential landlords.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I know that will be more work for staff, but I think that's a good point that we need to get that done, or that process, as soon as we can. Do we have any public comments online or email? In any form online, why don't I say it that way? Instead of asking separately. I know you're on top of it.
We have no comments.
Thank you very much. Or questions?
Or questions, sorry.
All right. So I'll bring this back to council. Do we have any other comments from anybody about this?
No, no comment.
Okay. Hearing none, then do I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution as amended?
Yes. I move to one, find that the proposed action is exempt from the California Environment Quality Act pursuant to State CEQA Guidelines, Section 15061B, common sense exemption. Read by title only, waive further reading, and adopt ordinance number 20-0-1362-U, an urgency ordinance of the City of San Marino adopting emergency regulations related to residential and commercial tenant evictions and declaring the urgency thereof. And three, suspend all late fees and penalties for administrative citations related to business license or permit renewals for businesses that were in good standing prior to the pandemic, and excluding the retroactive application of this waiver to past due amounts where penalties have already been assessed. And also, you said the...
You accept the amendments?
Yes, and accept the amendments.
So that was my question for Senior Counsel Lynch. If in the motion, it simply says the part about number two, read by title only, waive further reading and adopt ordinance number 20-0-1362-U as amended? Is that acceptable for the motion?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, very good. Thank you. Thank you. Do I have a second?
No second.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Yudi. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Tal?
I have a point of order, and that is that should this really be one motion? Because I'm in favor of one and two. I'm not in favor of the third part without further discussion and looking into it. So I'm going to vote for one and two, but against paragraph three of the motion. Can I even do that?
Why don't you divide up the vote? Why don't you divide up the item?
Well, unless... Well, why don't I abstain for the moment? Because it may be unnecessary to divide it up if you get the rest of the...
All right.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, let's go through. Okay, so...
All right. So for the moment, to please record, Councilmember Tal does an abstention?
What's that?
Do you want to make a comment about that? I thought I asked for a comment, so...
You may have, but I was taking one of my short naps.
All right.
Vice Mayor Yudi?
Yes.
And Mayor Shepard Ramon?
Yes.
All right. Councilmember Tal, do you want us to continue?
Yes, my argument is moot. I will vote yes as well.
All right. Thank you very much. The motion passes.
Apologies. I'm sorry. All right. Next, we have approval of appropriation in the amount of $4,500 from the General Fund Reserves to account for emergency expenses related to the COVID-19 response. And I believe we have a staff presentation. Thank you. Director Chung?
Thank you, Mayor. Staff has prepared a staff report before you for your approval of an appropriation in the amount of $4,500 from the General Fund Reserves to account for emergency expenses related to the COVID-19. The purpose of this report is to share the actions taken by the Finance Department to appropriately document the costs related to COVID-19 response, inform the City Council of procurement actions taken by the City Manager, now the director of, also the director of Emergency Services, within the scope of her responsibilities, and request an appropriation of funds to cover the expenses incurred by the operating budget to date. On March 17, 2020, the City Council declared a local emergency in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. The proclamation of the local emergency allows the City Manager, who is also the director of Emergency Services, greater authority to procure items being necessary in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Since the local emergency declaration, there has been some confusion regarding the purchasing authority of the City Manager. The City Manager, myself, and the legal council has met regarding this matter, and it was deemed that the three San Marino Municipal Code provisions stated in the staff report govern the procurement process during this emergency. On March 15, 2020, the Finance Department established an emergency accounting measure for all COVID-19-related expenses to track procurement of material supplies and staff time associated with this emergency. Staff has been vigilantly monitoring and researching information coming through the state and federal government regarding disaster funding. As fluid as the emergency has been, the optics behind the funding and reimbursement process has not been clear. Staff will continue tracking and documenting all expenditures related to COVID-19 for future reimbursement. As March 31, 2020, only two purchases were made out of the operating budget and the capital budget. Out of the operating budget, the city procured personal protection equipment, also known as PPE, through the vendor, Lycus, for $4,406.15. Staff purchased surface disinfectant and maintenance exam supplies. Out of the capital budget, the city procured an ID card printer through Western Graphics Incorporated for $7,857. The printer required immediate replacement due to its age of five years old, lack of laminating capabilities, the need to be frequently serviced. City employees are designated by state code as disaster service workers. The majority of the current city-issued ID cards lack the proper authentication language needed during this emergency. Additionally, the printer also needs a special and elevated law enforcement department's for official city ID cards. Going forward, staff will update the City Council regarding the procurement of material supplies and staff due to COVID-19. On the next City Council meeting, staff will be requesting a budget appropriation of a specific amount from the General Fund Reserves to cover ongoing COVID-19-related expenses in lieu of appropriating budget every City Council meeting. I am currently working with the Department of Eds to project an anticipated expense due to this emergency. At this time, staff recommends a budget amended to appropriate $4,500 from the General Fund Reserve to purchase emergency supplies for COVID-19 transmission mitigation. That ends my presentation, and staff and the legal council are available to answer the questions.
Thank you very much, Director Chung. Are there any questions from council? Councilmember Wong?
No, no question.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
No questions.
Councilmember Tal?
No questions.
Vice Mayor Yudi?
No questions.
And I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you very much. Hold on. We've spoken about this. No. Are there any questions from the public on this item?
None at this time.
Thank you. Then I would like to bring this back for council discussion. Do I have any comments? All right. Issues to discuss? Councilmember Wong?
No, no comments.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
So as it reads with the amendment of only the $4,500 that we are discussing today, no question, no comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Tal?
The only comment I have is the expenditure of money on the PPEs is indeed a vital expenditure that we should approve.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Yudi?
I have no real comments. I'm looking forward to the next discussion when we have a range of budget on what we think this whole virus is going to cost us so we aren't going nickel and dime. Because normally, if it was only $4,500, I would say, let's go find that saving somewhere else. But I understand the reason to put it all on the one big bucket so we understand what we're dealing with and hopefully get reimbursed for something.
All right. And thank you very much, Director Chung. I agree with and echo the comments of my colleagues that I think it would be great to have some sort of idea. And I think this did, I know that I spoke earlier in the week about there was, this raised some concern as whether we have adequate protective gear for our first responders and city staff and people who are working with the public at this time. And so I'm hoping the chiefs will come forward and give us an assessment of, you know, where things are with their supplies and things like that so we can have a good understanding of what expenses we're looking at to protect everybody in the upcoming weeks. And I don't know if you have anything to say at this time. I know.
If that was a question, we... Is that all?
No, it's not.
I think I can too.
I'm clearly on now.
Thank you.
We do an inventory every two days of our personal protective clothing.
Thank you.
And the vital clothing, what I consider vital, the N95 masks, the gowns, the nitro gloves, the thicker clothes we use in the police and fire departments. And we have between both departments about two months' supply of things keep at the current rate. The one shortage we may see is gowns that we use and the police department use. The one shortage we may see is, is gowns that we use and the police department use, and gowns we have about a 30-day supply right now. That's probably the only, what I would consider critical shortage, but those are necessary for us to protect our people, and we're going to keep using them and pursue all avenues to get additional gallons. The other non-critical PPE, surgical masks, other gloves, sanitizing equipment, we have at least two months for the balance of the city.
Thank you.
Early purchasing help, because everything is really difficult to obtain right now.
Great. Thank you very much for the update. I really appreciate that. Sorry to spring that on you, but I know that seeing this item and it is very important that we protect everybody, and I know the residents would like to hear that as well. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other comments? Or if not, do I have a motion and a second?
I move to appropriate, like amendment to appropriate $4,500 to account number 101-084376-0000. Materials and supplies COVID-19 for the purchase of emergency supplies for COVID-19 transmission mitigation.
Thank you. And do I have a second?
Second.
A roll call, please. Thank you. Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Tal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Yudi?
Yes.
And Mayor Shepard Roney?
Yes.
Thank you very much. The motion passes. Also, I need to apologize, in that last item, I inadvertently skipped over Councilmember Jacobowski's vote, and I'd just like to record that she has alerted me that she has voted in favor of the previous item, the resolution for, sorry, urgency ordinance related to the moratorium and fee. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't notice that either, and I'm sorry. Thank you. So that was a unanimous vote. Thank you. This is a time for written communications or public writings? Do we have any that have, other than I believe our city attorney mentioned something that came in? Is there anything else that we need to make note of today?
No.
Thank you. And also, we have council reports? Do we have any council reports?
The, the only report that I have, although it's probably pretty well-known throughout the community, is the schools have closed their school buildings for the school year, but they continue to offer online, or they refer to as a distance, so while the school buildings are closed, the schools are not closed.
Thank you.
Yes, I don't know if this is the right place to report this, but I want to comment on our first responders, the fire department for a resident's child a week ago, you know, seven-year-old girl was riding on scooter on Oxford and hit her head and fainted, unconscious, and then I guess the paramedics made the right decision of sending her to Ealing County Hospital, and she had surgery that night to, on her brain to relieve the bleeding. So, you know, our paramedics saved her life. Just want to come in then for their, you know, effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much as well. Anybody else? Vice Mayor Yudi or Councilmember Jacobowski?
No, I don't have any.
Sure. Again, it's not necessarily part of our agenda, but I delight in seeing our law enforcement very, very visible in the community, and we all appreciate all that our fire department is doing, along with the folks at city hall, keeping things running. Thank you to each.
Thank you very much. Well said. Now it's time for public comments. Is there anybody? I know that we got, Jean is here, so thank you for coming out, our public. I don't know if you guys can see him, but do we have anybody participating remotely who'd like to speak or who submitted an email comment?
No.
All right. Then we will adjourn the city council meeting.
Jean didn't want to say that?
Jean did not. He shook his head.
You just wanted to give him a set. Okay, thank you.
Well, please send our greetings to him, too.
Yes, absolutely. And he looks fit and fine, so all good. San Marino will prevail. The San Marino City Council then will adjourn to Friday, April 24th, at 8:30 a.m., San Marino Center. And thank you very much for everybody's help today to make this work, and I appreciate being drafted, Paul stepping up with this as well. So thank you very much. And be well and be safe, everybody.